Good morning. Before we get started, just checking to see if we have firefighter Demetrius Carlisle here with us this morning. Okay. Okay, we're going to do a brief check before we get started. Okay, thank you. Good morning and welcome to today's Board of Commissioners meeting this January 9th, 2024. Happy New Year to everyone as we are all fortunate to be able to enter this new season and hope that some of the restfulness and the hopefulness that you've had of 2024 helps to carry us in good spirit this morning and throughout the remainder of the year. With that, Commissioners, as we have for our meetings, we are kicking off with our invocation, which will be followed by the pledge. Our invocation will be brought by Pastor Brandon Owens of First Baptist Church of Marietta, and our pledge will be brought by our Fire Chief, Bill Johnson, this morning. For those of you willing and able, please stand for our invocation and pledge.
I almost fell, but I didn't. Good morning. My name is Brandon, and my family moved here just a few months ago from Middle Tennessee. It's the only place my wife and I have ever lived, and we really love it here. We are grateful. So would you pray with me? God, we ask that you continue to provide provision for our great community. Thank you for the proceedings this morning, for this board, and all the work that goes on here so that we can live well in this place. We ask that you continue to inspire us as a community to be kind, to be fair, to be thoughtful in loving our neighbor, as Jesus taught, putting others before ourselves. We ask that you continue to inspire creativity in this board and our community as we imagine even better ways that we can live together and love one another. We thank you for the way that you love us and help us to do the same. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you both Pastor and Chief Johnson. Before the meeting is called to order, we do have a special presentation. And Commissioners, I'd like to ask for you to join me up front for that presentation, and then we'll call our meeting to order, and then we're going to add an agenda item associated with that presentation. But we have a guest coming in. A guest was requested at our meeting yesterday, and so just ask for all of our Commissioners, please join us up front.
We're calling in a little help here. Sergeant Blakely, can you please join me? Commissioner Dave Burl, come on up. Well, actually, Commissioner Burl, this is an effort of the board. My fellow board members knew about this along with Lieutenant Blakely, and I will let him explain to you why we are here.
So Commissioner Burl has been a huge supporter for our K-9 unit for nearly 20 years. I first met her before she was a Commissioner, when she was with the Northeast Cobb Business Association. And she, back in 2006, she spearheaded a fundraiser to purchase two police dogs, one, which was my first dog. Since then, as District Three Commissioner, she's continued to be a huge supporter for the K-9 unit. She's assisted in multiple additional fundraisers over the years to help purchase new dogs. Most recently, she pledged a portion of her contingency funds to replace one of our retiring dogs and also funded a new kennel system. This kennel system's been a dream and a vision for us for a long time. It's capable of housing up to eight police dogs, has a dog bathing station, is climate-controlled. It'll be utilized to keep our dogs in while officers are in court or in training or on vacation. So it's only fitting that we named this facility the Joanne K. Burl Police K-9 Annex.
Okay, I have some dogs around. Thank you. Oh, my gosh. Well, since I couldn't get the dog part, now you ask for me. That's an inside joke. I'm speechless for once. Well, everyone knows how special our K-9s are and what a dog lover I am. I need y'all to train my bitches at home. Wild. But these dogs are officers too. They make arrests and find missing persons and search and rescue and all kinds of things, bombs. And they keep us safe, too. And if it weren't for their handlers and them, you know, we couldn't, we couldn't be safe. So thank you all. This is a total surprise. I'm in shock, and I really appreciate it. And I love you guys, all of you. So thank you. We have one. We have one. Just one moment. No problem.
No problem. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order, and I understand that both Commissioners Burl and Gambrell have statements to submit, which may be appropriate before we approve a non-agenda item for today.
I also have some questions of the county attorney, but I'll wait to do that later.
Okay.
Thank you. And if I can have the court record my statement as is found on the agenda today on page 230.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners. With that, Commissioners, I move that we approve the naming of the police, or I move that we approve adding a non-agenda item so that we can approve the naming of the Police K-9 Kennel located at Animal Services at 1060 Al Bishop Drive, Marietta, associated with today's presentation. Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any questions, or is there any discussion? All right, go ahead and call the question. The motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Commissioner. Now with that, Commissioners, I'm going to move that we actually approve the naming of the Police K-9 Kennel located at Animal Services at 1060 Al Bishop Drive, Marietta, to the Joanne K. Burl Police K-9 Annex. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0. Congratulations, Commissioner. All right, we are now moving into our public hearings for today, and our first two public hearings will be brought by our DOT Director Drew Ressler.
Good morning, Chairwoman, Commissioners, County Manager, Commissioner Burl, congratulations. Our first public hearing today is related to our Title VI program updates for Cobb Link. Cobb County Department of Transportation is a recipient of Federal Transit Administration funding assistance through an annual formula allocation as well as through various discretionary and competitive funding programs. FTA requires that all direct and primary recipients document their compliance with the U.S. Department of Transportation's transit-related Title VI regulations by submitting a Title VI program update once every three years or as otherwise directed by FTA. As part of that update, on November 14th, 2023, the Board authorized advertisement to hold a public hearing for the transit-related 2024 Title VI program update for Cobb Link. Therefore, the Department recommends the Board of Commissioners conduct a public hearing for the transit-related 2024 Title VI program update for Cobb Link effective April 1st, 2024 through March 31st, 2027.
Thank you, Drew. With that, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing for anyone who desires to speak to this matter and to this matter only, and we'll take an unlimited number of speakers for up to three minutes per speaker. Okay, not seeing anyone. I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, you have any questions for Drew regarding this matter? Not seeing any, we can go to the next item.
Very good, thank you. Our second item is related to a number of projects that we are looking to move forward. In accordance with state law, the Board of Commissioners is required to conduct a public hearing prior to expending county funds of $100,000 or more to employ an independent consultant or consulting firm or to conduct an independent study or survey. In the implementation of the four projects selected for planning-level scoping studies, the Department anticipates awarding transportation planning service contracts that could exceed $100,000 for the upcoming projects. Therefore, the Department recommends the Board of Commissioners conduct a public hearing prior to expending $100,000 or more for transportation planning services for Factory Shoals Pedestrian Bridge Over I-20 Scoping Study, Project Number B-2543, Alatuna Creek Greenway Trail Scoping Study, Project Number B-2544, Town Center Busby Park and Ride Transit Oriented Development Study, Project Number B-2545, and East-West Connector Corridor Improvement Scoping Study, Project Number B-2546.
Thank you, Drew. Similar to the prior public hearing, I'll go ahead and open up the hearing to any speaker who would like to address this matter or this matter only for up to three minutes per speaker.
Good morning, Chairwoman, Commissioners. I know I'm a broken record, but I'm wondering, how can we give this more of a window of funds, whether it's going to be $100,000 or $500,000? Could you accommodate the residents, the taxpayers, so that we know what we're saying yes or no to, or what exactly the Board of Commissioners is approving? So that would be really helpful for us, and I know that legally or whatever code it says you have to say it's over $100,000, under $100,000. Maybe accommodate the taxpayers. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other speakers regarding this matter? Okay, our public hearing is now closed, and as Ms. Rosman has been up here multiple times addressing the public hearing for matters of which there could be spending over $100,000, can you speak about why we approach it in this way and if it's possible to provide a window of funding for these and why or why not, and perhaps what would be the next steps for us to see the actual funding for these items?
Of course, on these in particular, these are related to ARPA funding, which will be considered by the Board later in the meeting. So this agenda item or this public hearing does not award any particular funding amount. Those funding amounts will be allocated through that ARPA agenda item or through various agenda items, whether it is the approval of the SPOS program or the annual budget. The actual funding of those items is approved in a particular budget through a separate board action, and then the actual contract is approved by the Board separate from this item. So again, there is no board action required here. It is really just a public notice out to the various vendors that these projects are coming, these projects are on the street, just be aware. More information about those projects are shown in the, whether it's through a master task order or through an open RFP process, which is the better avenue for those vendors to find out more information about these projects. And again, in terms of revealing, showing, and the Board approving what those final budget numbers are, those are included in that final project award.
Okay. Is it anticipated that you would know a window of funds for this? I believe that there was reference to maybe between 100 and 500. How would we know what would be proposed by someone on the outside for these projects?
Sure. For these in particular, that'll be included, that actual dollar amount for the various scoping studies is included in the ARPA agenda item.
And then an agenda item is in our ARPA section. Give me one moment.
That's correct. Agenda item number 30.
Yes, thank you, Chair. The glasses, that's the issue for me. In the associated agenda item, item number 30, there's a DOT infrastructure project match of $2.48 million for this project, and that would be associated with these items. And that $2.48 million, I know we'll address during that agenda item, which is a regular agenda item, Drew, but if you can share what that $2.48 is. Excuse me, I'm sorry. The spacing is off here. I'm showing seven, excuse me, 7.5. Yes, the line items are off.
That is correct. The budget for the Factory Shoals Pedestrian Bridge Over I-20 Scoping Study is $500,000. The Alatuna Creek Greenway Trail Scoping Study is budgeted at $625,000. The Town Center Busby Park and Ride Transit Oriented Development Scoping Study Analysis is budgeted at $500,000, and the East-West Connector Corridor Improvement Scoping Study is at $825,000.
All right, thank you, Drew. Are there any questions that Commissioners have for Drew with respect to this public hearing? All right, thank you, Drew.
Thank you.
Okay, and our final public hearing will be brought by our Water Systems Director, Judy Jones.
Good morning, Chairwoman, Commissioners and County Manager. The Water System requests the Board to conduct a public hearing prior to establishing indefinite delivery contracts that may exceed $100,000 for engineering services in three categories, which are water and sewer main design, water reclamation facility and pump station design, and hydraulic modeling. Indefinite delivery contracting is a standard procurement method for many local and state governments, and I believe even for the federal government. Utilizing indefinite delivery contracting for engineering services for smaller design projects is more efficient for staff and less burdensome for our consultants. Some consultants do not submit formal proposals for small design projects less than $100,000 because the cost and effort to prepare a formal proposal is not worth just a chance at getting a small value contract. Under indefinite delivery contracting, multiple firms would be pre-qualified for each design category. The total maximum value for each contract would be $500,000 per firm per year, but no minimum amount of work will be guaranteed. When a design or modeling project is identified, pricing will be obtained from the pre-qualified firms from that category. Any project that is more than $50,000, any project that's more than $50,000 will be bought back to the Board to approve the amount and the firm selected for that project. So while the maximum amount for work for one firm per year is $500,000, the Board will still approve all individual design projects that exceed $50,000 under this contract. This process is similar to our unit price construction contracts.
Thank you, Judy. With that, again, I'll open up the public hearing for an unlimited number of speakers for a maximum of three minutes per speaker. Not seeing any speakers, the public hearing is now closed. Thank you, Judy.
Thank you.
We are now at the public comment portion of our meeting, and I'll turn things over to you, Bill.
Thank you, Chairwoman. As the Board provides the podium for public comments, appropriate to review the related meeting rules, excuse me, when you come forward, please state your name, and if you're speaking on behalf of an organization, all comments should be addressed through the Chair. Public comment is not a dialogue with the Board, but an opportunity for the speakers to provide their comments to the Board. Comments should not be impertinent, derogatory, or offensive. To that end, the Board encourages, regardless of the topic, for the audience to be respectful and courteous to the speakers. Everyone attending this meeting should give others the right to both listen and to be heard by treating each other with civility. Statements made during the public comments portion don't necessarily reflect the opinions of the Board or the administration of Cobb government. There is a timer on the podium to keep track of your five-minute time limit. The first public speaker is Kristi Minor.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. My name is Kristi Minor. I'm here in this first meeting of 2024 to report that death and disability are on the rise and that Cobb Public Health is not responding. FDA Commissioner on November 30th, Dr. Robert Calath tweeted, "We are facing extraordinary headwinds in our public health with a major decline in life expectancy. The major decline in the U.S. is not just a trend, I describe it as catastrophic." This declaration should not have come as a surprise. On October 30th, I emailed the Cobb Public Health and my elected officials. On November 17th, I emailed the House Public Health Committee and state officials. In that email, I included data from the state Oasis database. This here shows the rate of death per 100,000 for 15- to 44-year-olds, specifically for Cobb County. If you look to the right for the last three data points, 2020, there was a spike in the rate of death, which did not drop in 2021 and 2022. This graph shows the exact same data, but for the whole state of Georgia, and you can see that there was a rise in 2020, but a drastic spike in 2021. In 2022, the rate of death did not even get back down to 2020. In that email, I also included resources, including the Insurance Collaboration to Save Lives. I would encourage you to visit their website and download their presentation dated December 4th, 2023. It's a nonprofit with a mission to save lives and mitigate loss, not only by educating about the problem, but by proposing solutions. They include several slides which focus on current data. I chose this one because it was one of the few that included data from 2023, the first three quarters. You'll see those green bars really stood out at me. This is percentage difference in death rate versus 2019 by age for stroke in the U.S. As a speech therapist who's worked with many stroke survivors, not everyone dies from their strokes, but most survivors struggle with some disability, I can only imagine the impact on our workforce. The Insurance Collaboration to Save Lives offers a proactive solution through routine lab work. They document their scientific rationale and provide references. Dr. Calath also tweeted on the 30th of November, "I believe that we need to seriously examine our level of accountability and changes that we can make to help what needs to be an all-hands-on-deck effort. The government, industry, and the public have all a role to play in improving life expectancy. First, we have a barrier in that our government is ignoring the problem. Second, the public has no input. After two of you informed me that you, the county commissioners, have no jurisdiction over the Cobb Public Health, I did see, I did find this org chart, which validates what you were explaining to me. On August 22nd of last year, I stood before you and asked that at the very least, the public be, have access to contact information for the Board of Public Health members that still is not available on the websites. 2023 had me reading the Book of Jeremiah to close out the year. It was convicting. I could not shake the message, if it happened before, it can happen again. Chapter 15 opens, 'Then the Lord said to me, even if Moses and Samuel stood before me pleading for these people, I wouldn't help them. Away with them, get them out of my sight, and if they say to you, but where can we go, tell them this is what the Lord says: Those who are destined for death to death, those who are destined for war to war, those who are destined for famine to famine, those who are destined for captivity to captivity.' Chapter 19 closes, 'This is what the Lord of heaven armies, so the God of Israel says: I will bring disaster upon this city and its surrounding towns as I promised, because you have stubbornly refused to listen to me.' I wish to leave you with some verses from chapter 17, and I pray that you hope, that they bring you hope and peace as they do to me. This is what the Lord says: 'Cursed are those who put their trust in mere humans, who rely on human strength and turn their hearts away from the Lord. They are like stunted shrubs in the desert with no hope for the future. They will live in the barren wilderness, in an uninhabited salty land. But blessed are those who trust in the Lord and have made the Lord their hope and confidence. They are like trees planted along a riverbank with roots that reach deep into the water. Such trees are not bothered by the heat or worried by long months of drought; their leaves stay green, and they never stop producing fruit.' Thank you for your attention to this matter."
The next speaker is Mindy Seeger.
Good morning, Chairwoman, Commissioners, other county staff. Happy New Year to everybody. My name is Mindy Seeger. I'm a resident of Cobb County, and I just wanted to lead us into, as next week we'll be celebrating Dr. King Day on Monday, and with a quote that I've been sharing in my networks, which is that everyone can be great because everyone can serve. A reminder that the day off is not a day off, but a day on, an opportunity for us to serve our communities. Dr. King further in that quote that kind of gets truncated, as a lot of his do, we'll hear a lot about his dreams, but not a lot about his actions, unfortunately. You need a heart, you only need a heart full of grace and a soul generated by love. So I hope we can keep that message of hope as we go into the New Year. I also wanted to offer to the community an opportunity, handsonaatlanta.org has a searchable database for service opportunities, and you can put in things like your age, if you're trying to look for service projects for your children as well, opportunities to serve the community in various ways. I also wanted to say that today's, it's appropriate that we've been focused on public safety. I think it's a shining example of the great service and commitment many people serve our county and our communities with every day. So I'll keep it short today and just say that I invite everyone in the Cobb community and on this board in the New Year to meet someone different from ourselves, learn something new, and stretch to serve our neighbors and community in new ways in 2024. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Christine Rosman.
Hello again.
Good morning.
Christine Rosman. First, congratulations, Commissioner Gamble, and thank you for all that you have done for the police, the animals, and for Cobb County. Second, I'd like to thank Drew for, and Chairwoman, for asking for more detail of that information. It just helps manage expectations so that we don't get sticker shock when the actual numbers come out. So that is very helpful. Thank you. Third, I wanted to say I did go to the Board of Elections meeting yesterday. It appears that Tate Fell is extremely competent on the ball and, and has jumped in with both feet, and we're looking forward to her expertise and what she brings. Also, at the meeting, could not help but notice that unfortunately, your appointee, Jennifer Mossbacher, chooses to not stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And absolutely, you're in America, you can do whatever you want, but when you are representing the people, there is an expectation, and, and that expectation needs to be honored. And she might just not be a fit for the Board of Elections if, or maybe because people don't know that she's not standing for the flag, or don't go to the Board of Elections or watch it. It is a bone of contention with a lot of people, particularly our veterans, that risk their lives, and families that have lost their loved ones because, you know, fighting for America. And, you know, part of that is, you know, if you have your own agenda, it's like, oh, I'm not going to do that. Well, what else are you going to say I'm not going to do? So it, it just sets a, it's not sitting well with a lot of people, and I hope you might have a conversation with her or consider taking her off your, as your appointee. And then also is, because I always like to talk about DEI, for, just for the reason of, is it good for our country, our county, our state? And I think that, you know, if anybody's been following anything, you see what's happened with some of the, what's happening with DEI. So like Claudine Gay plagiarizing. And then, and then when tried to held, to be held accountable, she says, oh, you know, you're coming after me because of my race. And it's not. I think that people are realizing that, like, if you don't want to get a window sucked out of the airplane when you're, you know, traveling across the country, you know, meritocracy and value and doing things properly is more important than what your outer shell is. We want to know what's inside, what, who are you inside? That's really, I think, what most people think about, but there's been, like, oh, look over here to all this stuff, and it's not a look over here. We want meritocracy. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Chairwoman, that concludes the first portion of our public speaker.
Thank you, Bill. Yes, Commissioner Burrell has a point of inquiry for our county attorney.
Mr. Burrell, in light of the ruling or order that we received yesterday from Judge Harris's court, we need to know what map we're operating under and the appeal process and what this means.
Okay.
Can we discuss that here?
Well, that's outside of the agenda right now. I thought, what I would ask is that if there's a question that pertains to the agenda that we have that when it's part of that particular agenda item, but this question could have been asked of Bill prior to this meeting. I don't understand why we're asking this right now. I thought it was with respect to an agenda item.
Well, last year, we had to ask the same thing, and that's when we were removed from the dais, Commissioner Gamble and I, and we've started entering our statements, but now I need to add to my statement that I don't, and did we not have to vote as a board on the appeal process to go to, to appeal the case or not?
No, ma'am, you never have before. We're happy to, if you want to take this up in executive session, when you talk about executive sessions, since it's regarding litigation.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. We were going to go back to our Board of Commissioners meeting agenda, and we are now on our consent agenda, and I would just ask that any questions pertaining to litigation are asked appropriately outside of this meeting, but not, it's not during the meeting. Okay, with our consent agenda, the matters, we're scrolling on the screen prior to the meeting, and we'll scroll on the screen following the meeting. The agenda items on the consent agenda are voted in bank, meaning they're voted all together. Commissioners, before I make a motion, or, why don't I go ahead and make a motion, and then I'll find out if there are any questions or concerns regarding the consent agenda. Commissioners, I move that we approve the items on consent as they have been revised, and to authorize execution of the necessary documents by the county personnel.
Second.
All right, is there any discussion? Yes, Commissioner Burrell.
Madam Chair, I see we have a revised agenda item for number 26.
Yes.
Discretionary. Amount.
Yes. Thank you.
Yesterday, I asked that, well, I understand you don't know the actual expense.
Yes.
But you have categorized it.
Yes.
But we all, I also asked for an accounting to come back to us with the, all the expenditures and also anything outside of this would need to come back.
Okay.
For approval. And I didn't know if you were going to put, like, events, special events, a certain amount, meetings.
Yes.
Breakfast meetings, lunch meetings, a certain amount, and kind of break it down a little better.
Yes, as they occur, we can account for the expenditure, so I'll ask the clerk if you can put that in the meeting, agenda item that, I wanted to get the exact verbiage that you have, but that finance will account for the expenditures and provide that for the commissioners, and for matters outside of the scope will be brought to the commissioners.
Actually, I would like agenda item number 26 to be pulled from consent and heard separately.
Okay, we can pull it from consent. Okay, are there any other questions? All right, Commissioners, I move that we approve the agenda items as it has been revised. We're missing, Commissioner Gamble, we're missing your vote. Yes, the motion passes 5-0, and we will now address agenda item number 26. Bill will present that item.
Morning Commissioners, County Manager. Item number 26 is to approve a reallocation of funding within the Chairwoman's FY24 budget from contingency to operating.
Yes, and again, it's in accordance with what's been listed here, and I'll read the background for those in the audience so they, they can be apprised of this agenda item. On July 25th of 2023, the Board of Commissioners adopted the FY24 budget, which included an allocation of $200,000 in undesignated contingency funding with each of the four district commissioners' budgets, as well as the Chairwoman's budget. The funding is intended to allow the Chairwoman and commissioners to address one-time expenditures within their respective districts during the year. At this time, the Chairwoman requests approval to reallocate this funding from her contingency budget to operating budget to move forward various projects during the fiscal year, and examples include, but are not limited to professional supportive services, for example, communications, policy research, et cetera. Also for stakeholder meetings, special events, community events, for example, the faith leaders breakfast or consular meetings, food distribution events, our youth commission, civic leader activities, et cetera, and to also cover any travel, office supplies, printing costs, and training, et cetera. And the impact statement is that allocations will be made from current year contingencies for one-time expenditure. No additional funding will be required, and there was some robust discussion during our agenda meeting yesterday, because this is the first time that our commissioners have had such an allocation, and a lot of the things that I had discussed with our budget analysts have been covered in other budgets in prior years. However, this is an opportunity for commissioners to move our expenditures within our offices, as well as address some other events that we may have throughout the year. And so in order to do that, I've got to be able to move money from the contingency to operating, and from speaking with finance, we're putting forward this agenda item. The reason that there is no limit, there are no funding numbers associated with each matter, because it's the first time we are actually doing this, and I'm speaking with a budget analyst, we, it was a very difficult exercise for us to be able to put numbers by each agenda item. Also, we understand that some commissioners have, are spending, spending some things that are associated with their office beyond contingency, because there has not really been a coaching prior to us receiving these dollars, us migrating some of our expenditures here. And so with that learning curve, I did provide the different subject matters of which the funding could address, and again, will plan to account for those expenditures as they are made. So with that, Commissioners, I do move that we approve the reallocation of funding within the Chairwoman's FY24 budget from contingency to operating, and to adjust the background statement that includes the accounting of these dollars to be shared with commissioners as expenditures are made. Yes, Commissioner?
Just have a couple of follow-ups. Oh, go ahead.
Second for discussion. Okay.
In reading the update, the examples, it reads, "Examples include, but not limited to," and the concern for me is the "not limited to," and I'm not sure what would be included in that category at a later date.
Okay.
So, you know, the items here, and this is what we requested yesterday, so thank you for that, but the "not limited to" is where I'm having difficulty.
And we could, yes.
When I met with, I believe we all met with the, with Maria.
Maria.
I believe is her name, to discuss our contingency. And while I didn't have an exact number for her when I went over my budget, we had an approximate amount, right? Because that's basically what the budget is. Based on my previous spending for my gift basket class, for example, for my seniors, I had an estimate of what I've spent over the last several years. So while it's not an exact amount, it kind of put me in the ballpark of where my spending would land. So I, I think that, while I understand there's a lot in your office, I do also believe that there should be some type of estimate attached to some of these events. It was mentioned yesterday that funding may, for these events, may or may not come out of your budget, which means that it's going to come out of someone else's at some point because somebody's, right, or, or I believe you said sponsors.
With the youth commission, we've had, yes.
Sponsors.
And with the state of the county, we've had sponsors for that.
Sponsors, right.
So, again, it's not necessarily coming out of a county budget. There could be other funding sources.
Right, I understand. So again, for me, it's just the, a "not limited to." In discussion yesterday, there was also mention with hiring or putting out an RFP for a consultant for policy provisions, or whatever the case is, but that's not listed on here. So that leads me to believe that that might be under "not limited to." I just need a little bit more feedback or a little bit more.
It's listed here under policy research.
Policy, okay, okay, okay.
But I do appreciate the "not limited to." I think when I spoke to Bill and I shared with the object codes that were provided by the Budget Office, there was a sundry list of expenditures, of which were not added here, and could take up multiple pages, because I was handed a booklet, and I think this was a way of just capturing that, but I, these are the main interests that I talked about with the finance analyst or the budget analyst, and I have no problem taking out the "not limited to," and then just providing commissioners any additional documentation should I have an interest outside of these, so that there's some transparency with respect to that. Again, this was a way, and perhaps this wasn't the best statement of trying to get that, that capture of all the expenditures within that, within that booklet. Yes.
We did, we did, I'm not sure the Chairwoman had $200,000 last year, but we did, or you had, didn't have the million.
This, this is the first year.
This is the first year of contingency. When I-
I had $200,000 last year that I used.
When I, when I put forward the budget. When I put forward the budget in a prior year, what I did was provide, and I'll share some background for the contingency item. I provided funding for each commissioner, well, all the commissioners are $4 million. It was divided amongst four commissioners, and each commissioner had the opportunity to choose capital projects within their respective districts, and I did that, again, in reflection of prior years of serving, and knowing that there were projects that were difficult for each commissioner to move forward that were responsive to needs within their area. And as a commissioner, I felt there should be some level of autonomy in addressing matters in each commissioner's district or area of interest. So that was added in the first, in the first wave of similar agenda items. With the contingent, with the contingency, it was based upon my interest in having each commissioner handle their operating expenses. And again, I shared over my observation as being a commissioner, I've seen commissioners want to address matters within their district, and have had very difficult time in being able to do so, because each commissioner has not had a budget to be able to move with respect to those matters, and I share with you, the one that really gripped me was my first year of being here and not being able to address a DOT matter that occurred in your district, and just the level of fight that we had to have as a commission to be able to move funds so that you can address that matter. And so there are other matters that can come up during the year, whether it's needing support for communications, or whether it's having an event for your constituents, and having the ability to be able to provide that, or another group in your community having a public concern. I feel as if there should be some level of autonomy for district commissioners to be able to address those within a limited budget, which is what the contingency is.
Okay. But we have all brought forward specific projects or items and dollars associated with our $200,000, and this to me is a blanket, but I would, if you're going to take out the "not limited to," anything other than these examples listed would need to come back to the Board for approval.
Okay.
And we would also need a full accounting, and then for policy research, if you're going to hire a consultant for policy, policy has to be approved by the whole Board.
Correct, and it helps me to present that to the full Board.
But I-
There's, yes.
It's just, well, but we, we don't vote on who is hired, or the process for bids, or however, research you're going to hire some, a firm, a consulting firm. research you're going to hire some, a firm, a consulting firm. But then we would have to vote on changing the policy.
Not necessarily. The policy would be to help inform matters that we're discussing, that we are discussing. For instance, I know that we've been discussing housing for some time. We've had different code amendments that have come forward addressing housing. We have not really had expansive policy research done as we put forward code to understand the broad impact of those decisions, not just on our operations today, but what is the current and future impact of that? How does it impact other policy decisions that we're making as a board? For instance, when we made policy decisions to limit the number of persons that can live in a household, we've actually limited persons as they were aging in our county. We've had land use permits come up where people have tried to have caregivers in their home and have had challenges with that. And sometimes when we don't have the proper analysis to think through what the repercussions are of decisions that we're making, we end up having to come back and address things that were not robustly vetted. I used to be a policy analyst for the governor's office of planning and budget, and it woes me, the limited amount of time that we put into addressing policy here. And this is not necessarily within the scope of our staff, which is supposed to actually administer the policy interest of the board. And our board is here to set policy for the county. Now, I would encourage if any other commissioner has interest in, in having policy vetted, that they consider how they can utilize their resources or even institution for assistance. I know I've reached out to multiple colleges for assistance and some of their graduate programs, they do require some dollar amount for assistance in robust research. And so these are things that cost money that can be provided, of which was a consideration. But that's one example of that. It's not to be any commissioner over the head and say it has to be my policy. It's to say, when I put forward a policy, it's going to be robustly considered in multiple arenas for your consideration.
Well, in the past, community development has always brought forward the single-family dwelling code, which in the car, limited cars in the process of zoning for an exemption or exception through a land use permit. So I, you know, the, the presentation on affordable housing that we had last year by Courtney, your chair of that committee, we knew nothing, I knew nothing about and was never included in the, in the meeting. So it came to us at a work session. So I, I have a problem with you doing your own research and then, you know, on policy when we have to adopt it.
I'll share with you, that was not his research, but that was the Atlanta Regional Commission. And the board did vote to have the Atlanta Regional Commission vet that policy. You asked for an example of why policy research was needed, and I think that was an example. It provided a robust consideration of our housing stock as we're making decisions moving forward. And it's something that I have been referring to when I spoke to our director for how we can move forward housing policy. So I think that that is a clear example of the benefit of being able to pay someone to take some time and do some digging when there's, when there are areas of interest for the county. And you're right, typically, we do rely on staff to do this kind of research, but sometimes they are unable to provide it at the same breadth of someone else who spends their time just doing research. And what I've seen from staff is, and which I appreciate, is them at least benchmarking to see what other jurisdictions may have a similar policy. We are doing this with our stormwater utility and looking at what other jurisdictions also have a program. But some of these things, again, depending on how deep you go into policy, may take additional consideration and time beyond what our staff is able to provide, from what I've seen.
I just have a quick question on the policy research in terms of setting expectation with the board. What can the board or what should the board anticipate as it relates to the policy research? Is it, you know, are these items that are going to be farmed out based on what we've discussed? Or is it just perhaps maybe an idea of, of yours that may not necessarily have been shared with the board? I'm just wanting to know what the expectation would be.
I have no particular, specific policy matter to come out of this interest. Something that you can do with, share with someone who does policy research is that I'm interested in affordable housing generally. They can then start as a, somebody who does policy research, they can look at it and look at subtopics within that and start to narrow down what is feasible, what is possible. And there are some things that may not necessarily need to be done through board action. There could be some things that could be a change of a practice. There could be very low-hanging fruit that we can consider. For instance, something that now that I think about it, I used to have zoning cases that had, we have a lot of industrial, as you're aware, in District Four, industrial properties that are adjacent to housing. And I used to have to go in and do research to find out what is the impact of these particular chemicals or this process near a home and pull all-nighters sometimes to prepare for that. Someone that does research can do that and can do it handily and provide that. So it may not necessarily be I'm coming and asking you to adopt a policy, but it's helping my decision-making so that when we are here discussing things as a board, I can do it with an informed opinion. Yes. Yes, Commissioner Garmble, I'm sorry.
If I can add on to this, but that is what we have zoning staff for because John Peterson is excellent at giving us the history of how an area has changed. And I think we all know that the only reason why residential is next to industrial is because the board has approved residential to go into industrial areas and then we cause other problems down the road. One of my, my problems with the whole policy goes back to if we can't rely on staff who are paying to know these things, to guide us in our votes that we cast every single time we sit up here, essentially, you're looking to potentially hire a lobbyist to support your position. And I'm saying this broadly because I'm not sure if anybody has read the uninformed development code, but in that UDC, it is essentially talking about getting rid of Cobb County's policies. It's talking about getting rid of the comp plan. Those are the foundation to which this county was developed on. So when you sit here and say you want to hire people for policy research, knowing what is already going on in the uninformed development code, we are already in the process of making sweeping changes that our constituents are not aware of. I also have a problem, and Bill, I'm going to kind of put you on the spot, but my understanding when the $200,000 was allocated to the Board of Commissioners, that each expenditure was to come back to the board for approval prior to it being expended. Is that correct?
So the way the contingency works, and this is a countywide policy, so anytime you move a dollar out of a contingency account, it has to come back for approval. So that is that step. And typically, how we've done that in the past is we, I think the way the board is looking at this is the capital contingency, the $1 million that we've had, has come back individually or as groups, as individual agenda items. I think Commissioner Burrell has even brought some of hers for the 200,000 to move for very specific projects. And those have to come back for a couple of reasons. One, anytime we move out of contingency, it has to come back. Two, if we transfer it to another department's budget, it has to come back. If we enter into a contract that exceeds the purchasing requirements of $50,000, it also has to come back. Everything we've done thus far has met those requirements, as far as either had to come back because it moved out of contingency, contract-wise, dollar value-wise, it had to come back, or we're transferring it to another department. This will be the first one where we're not transferring it to another department. It's staying within the chairwoman's budget. So the agenda item to give budget the authority to move it from contingency to operating has to be a board-approved action. So this one is a little unique, a little different than the ones we've done in the past.
And so I guess that's, again, where I have issue with this agenda item, is you're asking yourself to be held outside of the policies and standards that we make every other department adhere to in the expending of taxpayer dollars.
Bill, would this be in contrast to how other departments operate?
I do want to clarify that. So by taking this step, if this agenda item is approved, that would meet any requirement, like, for example, if finance had a contingency, we would require an agenda item to move from contingency to operating. Once in our operating budget, we have flexibility to move between operating accounts, and that, that is part of the budget guidelines and restrictions that we have. So when we move it between different segments or different departments, that's where we're requiring the agenda item. So this does meet county requirements and policy to move it from contingency to operating. Once it's in operating, then you have that discretion to move between, for example, special events, professional services, travel, those type of things, as long as you have those funds available. So any department within the county, if you have, for example, a line that you have savings and you need to move it to another line within that same operating contingency, operating category, you have the flexibility to do that. So that does not require board action, nor does it change your overall budget or your overall budget categories. So you do have that discretion within those categories. Personnel is a very different story, that, that is very different. Anything to do with personnel has to come back before the board. But once you have it within that category, again, for example, with capital, for example, you could have it in capital contingency and then move it to a specific renovation line where, you know, maybe it's interior renovations, HVAC or something like that. So that's where we park those as we kind of get ready to do a project. We put them generally as preliminary estimate, and then we move them into individual lines based on what that project was going to entail and when those costs come in as final. So this, this would meet county policy by approving the agenda item from contingency to operating.
But, so you do have a history of how much operating costs that the Board of Commissioners' bucket has been over the years.
Sure.
So there is a basis to which you could easily go back and say, okay, I'm anticipating a signing, as Commissioner Sheffield said, you know, to special events, X amount of dollars. I think if that was attached to this, it would be a little bit more easy to swallow. And as far as the, oh, well, we might be able to get grants and donations to help do that, then wouldn't that essentially put money, not take the money out of the count, which would then leave money in there for you to do something else or which would then create fund balance?
Yes.
Which we know, fund balance at the end of the year then goes to do other special things within the county that weren't budgeted for. So, you know, I, I don't, I don't agree with your statement that, you know, well, what if we have funding that's received? Again, we've, we've got mechanisms to account for that. I just think you need to be more transparent and, you know, as Commissioner Burrell did with her agenda items, because I think she's the only one that's brought forth for the contingency portion of our budget, it was exact amounts as to what she expected to be expended. And for example, on the kennels, if the kennels came in underneath her budgeted amount, that would then be credited back to her and then she could choose something else to expend it on. But again, it would have to come back to the board to be approved prior to expending. I just think you need to be held to the same standards.
Okay.
And, and all the items last year and this year were agenda items for specific projects that had to be approved before the money was dispersed. And that, that's what I'm having trouble with here on, on just a blanket, 200,000 in category.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, and I do just for clarity, especially for the audience here, there is a difference between capital expenses for projects that are really specific and the operating budget, which allows more flexibility, hence why they are categorized differently in our budgeting process. And so understanding the needs for some of the other things that may come up in day-to-day office operations that, as was stated earlier, used to come out of other departments' budgets. Now we're kind of being held accountable for maintaining our direct expenses to the county. So for that, I was more amenable to categories within these, within this type of spending, not exactly specific projects, because that's not always the situation that may occur. But that's only for the operating budget. There's some flexibility. I, I do agree, though, that the, that these agenda items should be coming back to the board and with the, are not limited to, that that language should be removed or at least reference the book of charge codes, because I know operational funds have clear requirements within the county. There are only certain things that we can even use those funds for. So if, if it's a reference to that, that would also suffice.
And I know the board's already asked, so this is something, we can provide a monthly basis of accounting of far as the, the commissions' budgets and how they're trending and what those expenditures are. So if that is something the board would like to see moving forward, we're happy to do that.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, would you?
But, I was going to follow up on that. But in doing that, the money would have already been expended by the time we see those reports. And I, and I guess, again, kind of what we're saying with this 200,000 is, you know, we should be approving it before it's expended.
Yeah, I think, I think I heard two comments on that. I think I heard one, asking for the accounting, which, to your point, Commissioner, that would be after the fact. And then two, I think what I heard also was if there was something that was not included in the list, that would be, the chair would seek approval from the board.
And I don't, yes, and I don't have a problem in sharing, once we do have a dollar amount associated with something, sharing that with the board in advance of that. Again, I'm not aware of what each cost may be, and I think that it is, with all the various expenses, I, I think it would be a tedious exercise to come and have every line item approved. For instance, if there were office supplies purchased in the office. But I don't have a problem in talking with each commissioner and getting feedback prior to expenditure and being able to explain why those things are being done. And I'll be honest with you, and these are a number of things that are being covered and in speaking with the budget analyst, there are a lot of costs of the commissioners that are not just solely within our budget. There are some of the things that we do that are absorbed by other departments that are not very clear. And so just, there was a, a lot of discussion regarding our activity and how those things are being covered. And I think as we go through this exercise of identifying that, perhaps through my contingency or however each of you desire to spend yours, those things will be more clear over time.
Just for clarification, Bill, but based on policy, if it's not, if it's less than $50,000, then it wouldn't have to come before the board?
It would not for, that is correct. It would not have to come before the board.
Or professional services. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Yes, you're correct.
Okay. And that's for any, any item?
That is correct.
Okay.
And the only time it would is if we had to move a budget from one department to another. But if it was already within your budget, you would have the ability to make that purchase.
Okay. And that, just for clarification, that doesn't require any type of conversation or anything with the board?
No.
It doesn't require it, but I'll share, after this conversation, I will be sharing any consideration of expenditure with the board and we'll work on a way that that gets communicated.
Sure.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Would you be willing to make this a little more detailed and bring it back on the 23rd?
I would ask to be able to move it as is today and to provide that level of detail as agenda items move forward. That would be my ask.
Understood. I think the desire, at least what's been articulated on this, because we are doing this for the first time, and so even beyond our practices, we have to think about all the other, you know, our successors and how they may approach this as well. I think it may be, like I said, I think it would be sufficient to have categories and maybe buckets of funds, not necessarily where it's saying, hey, I'm only going to be, because you can obviously move things around, but to give an idea that for special events, maybe there's an allocation of 25,000, for professional services, allocation of 100,000, something, something to that degree so that that expectation can be set. And we can have that practice as a board and hold each other accountable for some of that as well.
Okay. Again, recognizing that dollars can move in between those categories. But that's something that I think, I mean, it could be done today with those three categories, but again, it's just, it's just so loose of a conjecture at this point. But I think it would be, it would be excessive, but I would say for professional supportive services, we can limit that to 100, and then for special events to 50, and then to travel office to 50, again, which seems excessive, but that is, that is the limit of which I could know to put towards each of those categories today. I mean, again, there are a number of events that I have, like the youth commission, the international festival, so many things that come up throughout the year. It's, it's very difficult to ballpark the expense in addition with the sponsor- It's, it's very difficult to ballpark the expense, in addition with the sponsorship that may come and which fluctuate throughout the year. But I would be willing to categorize that in, in that nature, if that's, if that would get you to support the agenda.
I think, I think it gets us closer. And like I said, I'm just trying to take the temperature here of everybody and make sure that, like I said, we're setting that standard.
Okay.
And, yeah, thank you.
And again, I'm putting it in those three buckets, again, knowing that the object codes within the operating and contingency budget far exceed what's listed here. But again, if they were to do that, I can come back to the commissioners and share what that is. Commissioner?
You know, I, I agree with Richardson that since this is the first time that we're doing this, I'd really like for us to get this right. You know, because, and, and I understand all of your points, but I think for consistency's sake and for transparency's sake, I think we should all follow the same model, particularly for any boards to come after us. I just think that there should be a standard across the board. So I, I think it might be best to give consideration to possibly removing this and then just having conversations with the commissioners and coming back and placing it on the twenty-third.
Okay. I don't mind doing that, commissioners. I do know that there are some services that I requested support in, that I would like to be able to start talking to different persons regarding some policy decisions, regarding the things that the board are doing. I didn't want to do that until I knew that we even had the budget to do that, so I don't mind waiting, but just know that I would like to have that conversation definitely before the next meeting. And also, I would just ask that, again, we look at the different nuances between operating and contingency. That operating, yes, does not require the same level of detail and for it to come back to the board as a contingency budget would.
I think we're pretty much all clear, at least I am, I can't speak for everyone else, but I understand the difference between the two.
And then I would share, to be consistent with what the board has had, I was willing to absorb some of my expenses through contingency, and some board members have already spent their contingency. And so, for that, there will not be consistency for this year, because some board members have already spent down their two hundred.
Consistency in what respect?
I'm, well, that's what I'm asking of you, as far as what, you know, you're looking for from consistency, there are some commissioners that have already spent their budget, perhaps similar to a capital budget, which would be very different than how I plan to spend the operating budget.
No, well, my point with consistency is basically having an estimated cost to a line item. That, that's what I meant.
Okay. We don't have to go the full capital requirements there.
They would, okay.
Yes. But if there is a capital project, then that should, that line item should be in there, yes.
Okay. So are you looking for it to be more specific than a general category?
I, I think if those categories are...
Itemized and the cost associated.
Yeah, I think that's going to help, I think it's going to answer that question. I think that's going to help us get there as a full board.
Okay. So then, for example, for the flowers or the garden, would we anticipate seeing that come back as an agenda item in contingency with a dollar amount associated with that? Or, I mean, are you looking at per event, are you looking per events, per project?
Well, that would be the accounting that would come back of how it was spent, but for categories, Bill could probably help you with estimates of buckets for each, like, events, fifty thousand dollars. And I'm just throwing something out there.
And that's what I'm proffering to, that's what I proffer today.
But you don't have the amounts associated, you just have a list of different categories, but nothing as far as a bucket. And then anything over that would have, anything other than these categories would have to come back for approval. And any money accounting for the specific event or meeting would have, would have to be itemized as an expenditure.
This is what I look forward to. I look forward to having each of your support in doing that. Again, there, these are the three categories that I do plan to have. Similar to what I shared today, we'll probably put forward some funding broadly, like a hundred and fifty and fifty, have that come back, and then, as I shared today, come back and itemize things as they are, as they are spent down. That can be provided per each commissioner, so that the buckets are clear on the agenda item. But they would be pretty similar to what is here today unless somebody has something else that they would like to share. But I do appreciate you helping us get towards the, helping me get towards the finish line, because my goal, again, is to be responsive within these different areas and to have the same level of flexibility that, not only that I perceive that we should have as being commissioners of this board, but that is shared by many other elected officials with other operational budgets. Okay, so with that, I will, there's a motion, and then there's a second, but I will ask that we, I don't even know how you hold this, so you said this is zoning, but that we pull this for consideration. I think where there's a motion and a second, there needs to be a vote unless there's a new motion. So I'll supersede that motion or substitute that motion that I moved, that we bring this item back for our Board of Commissioners meeting on January twenty-third with the monetary buckets associated with the, with the buckets that are listed here, to be listed in a table for the next meeting.
I second that, but I don't know if, I don't know if we need to get clarity to make sure that...
End discussion with us.
That's fine. Manager, would you do it?
If I can ask the county attorney, don't we need to deny this? Because this is kind of the same position that we got ourselves in on that resolution last year, where we had an agenda item for the resolution. And essentially, at that point, we had to deny the agenda item, and then we did it with the understanding that we were going to have communications with the community and bring it back. So in this case, wouldn't it be best to deny this agenda item with the understanding that the chair will be bringing it back on a future agenda?
It was done in that instance, it doesn't have to be done that way. In this particular instance, there was an agreement, as I recall, in that particular instance, whether it was to be coming back or not coming back, and there was, there was a denial, even by the supporter of that one, denied it. In this instance, there's been discussion regarding how it could come back. There's now a motion and a second. It could just be pulled, if they wanted to pull it, but it's a motion and a second to be brought back with those details. So it's, it's properly before the board to vote.
I'm, I'm fine with the motion that's on the floor.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, there's been a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? We'll call the question. Thank you, commissioners, the motion passes five zero. Thank you. Okay, we will now move on to the regular agenda, and the first section that we have coming up is the American Rescue Plan Act.
Good morning, Chairwoman.
Good morning.
Misses, Madam County Manager. Our first item this morning is to request the board to authorize the reallocation of ARPA funds previously returned to contingency and to allocate earned interest in the fund. On February fourteenth of last year, the board approved an allocation of twenty million dollars to cover two years of public safety hiring incentives, salaries, and recruitment efforts. However, during the FY twenty-four budget preparation, the board rolled the second year of that allocation into the county's adopted budget, freeing up ten million dollars to be placed back into the ARPA contingency. We are requesting that those funds, along with the interest that has been and will be allocated, or will be accruing, be allocated as follows. The county capital infrastructure account, seven million nine hundred thirty-nine thousand six hundred twenty-three dollars and fifteen cent, to county DOT infrastructure match, seven point five million, and to nonprofit allocation of two point four eight million. Therefore, we request the Board of Commissioners authorize the reallocation of seventeen million nine hundred nineteen thousand six hundred twenty-three dollars and fifteen cent of ARPA funding previously returned to contingency and allocated earned interest in the ARPA fund, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
All right, commissioners, I move that we approve this agenda item as it has been presented.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, call the question. The motion carries for one with Commissioner Burrell in opposition.
Thank you, commissioners. Our second and our final item this morning is for the board to approve an appropriation of ARPA funds in the amount of twenty thousand dollars to purchase fresh produce boxes for distribution by existing nonprofit partners. One of the primary missions of the ARPA program is to combat food insecurity still being faced by many of our residents. One thousand twenty-pound boxes of fresh produce will be distributed on January twentieth by two of our ARPA-approved nonprofits, which are Reflections of Trinity and MUST Ministries. Therefore, we request the Board of Commissioners approve the appropriation of ARPA funds in the amount of twenty thousand dollars to purchase one thousand fresh produce boxes for distribution, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize, authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Okay, so moved as presented.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Commissioner Burrell?
Yesterday, I thought it was discussed that the partnership with Senior Services was with MUST, and they, the boxes would be distributed at Powder Springs Station, Senior Center?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, not at MUST?
Not at MUST headquarters. MUST comes to Senior Services at Powder Springs Road, because they have the large coolers where they can store the, the produce prior to distribution, so.
And then Reflections of Trinity will have their own in Powder Springs?
Yes, ma'am.
And are they in the city of Powder Springs? I'm not sure where they're located, but it, it would be at their location.
Yes, ma'am, it'll be at their location.
For the other half?
Correct.
Okay, and they, these were already approved through the eligibility with Deloitte and all that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and as I shared, very happy to see these move forward and just ask for our consideration of areas of need across the county. We're starting off, I think, great with these, and just know that I, I think there'll be continuing opportunity, considering the zeal of our agricultural commissioner of the state that made this possible for us.
Yes, ma'am.
Our former, former, thank you. Thank you, our former agricultural commissioner. All right, we have a motion and a second, is there any additional discussion? We'll call the question. The motion carries five zero. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
We are now at our transportation tab.
Good morning again. The department has twelve items for your consideration this morning. On December twelfth, twenty twenty-three, the board adopted a resolution accepting the Cobb County Mobility SPOSS proposed program of projects authorizing staff to proceed with development of an M SPOSS ballot referendum for November twenty twenty-four, and authorized submission of proposed transit projects to the ATL for consideration as an amendment to the Atlanta Regional Transit Plan update. To effectively prepare for a twenty twenty-four M SPOSS ballot referendum in accordance with House Bill nine thirty, it is necessary to educate the public about the proposed project list. The department therefore recommends contracting for transportation and transit planning services to support activities necessary for public education. Therefore, the department recommends the Board of Commissioners approve project number TR five-two-three, task order number two, to the twenty twenty-two master task order contract with Kim Lee Horn and Associates Incorporated in an amount not to exceed two hundred eighty-seven thousand one hundred thirty-two dollars for planning services related to public outreach for a mobility special purpose local option sales tax ballot referendum for November twenty twenty-four.
Okay, so moved.
Second, thanks for all of the hard work on this.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any additional discussion? Commissioner Burrell?
Oops, take that off, Brad, I didn't, I pushed the wrong button.
She can reset her vote, please.
Um, yeah, as I said yesterday, I understand we have to have public meetings and educate the public for the referendum, but I can't support spending general fund money to go to SPOSS, to the potential SPOSS project.
Any other discussion?
No discussion, just thank you for all of the work that you and your team put in for this and the additional, the additional meetings we had surrounding some of the other items, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Yes, thank you, Drew, thanks for your follow-up. We had some concerns with respect to this, which is why this is continuing from our last meeting. And between then and now, you've set up meetings with both myself and Commissioner Sheffield to meet with Kim Lee Horn and to walk through their intent for how they plan to move forward. They detailed robustly how they plan to work with partners in providing outreach throughout the county. And in addition to that robust presentation, I appreciate what you've included in our agenda item to detail the different ways that they plan to address our M SPOSS. So with that, I am very supportive of moving forward. And with that, commissioners, I'll call the question. The motion carries three-two with Commissioners Burrell and Gamble in opposition.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners adopt a resolution authorizing submission of a Georgia Transportation Infrastructure Bank grant application to the State Road and Tollway Authority to assist with construction of Bells Ferry Road over Noonday Creek. Project number B twenty-one zero one, authorize payment of a grant application fee to the State Road and Tollway Authority in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars, and further authorize the chairwoman or her designee to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burrell?
Motion to approve, second.
All right, is there any additional discussion? Call the question. The motion carries five zero. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve project number X twenty-five forty-nine, task order number one, to the twenty twenty-two master task order contract with Crashmont Smith in an amount not to exceed eighty-two thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars and thirty cents for Noonday Creek Trail Extension supplemental study, authorize the corresponding budget transaction, and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burrell?
Motion to approve, second.
Is there any additional discussion? Call the question. The motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve change order number two to the resurfacing contract twenty twenty-two dash three, Local Roads District Three with Bartow Paving Company Incorporated in an amount not to exceed one hundred twenty-five thousand nine hundred sixty-five dollars for resurfacing of county maintained streets, project number B twenty-nine zero three, authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burrell?
Motion to approve, second.
And thank you, Drew, for the list yesterday.
Of course.
All right, is there any additional discussion? Call the question. The motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Exceller Construction LLC in an amount not to exceed one hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for drainage system repairs on Cooper Lake Road, project number B twenty-two fifty, authorize the corresponding budget transaction, and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Richardson?
So moved, second.
Is there any additional discussion? Call the question. The motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Chatfield Contracting Incorporated in an amount not to exceed one hundred thirty-six thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars and seventy cents for drainage system repairs on McCandy Drive, project number B twenty-two ten, authorize the corresponding budget transaction, and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burrell?
Motion to approve, second.
Is there any additional discussion? Call the question. The motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners ratify previous action by the county manager authorizing emergency drainage repairs on Forest Peak Circle in response to voids, approve project number B two-two-one zero nine to the twenty twenty-one countywide unit price contract with Advanced Sports Construction LLC in an amount not to exceed two hundred eighteen thousand eight hundred ninety-five dollars for said repairs, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burrell?
Motion to approve, second.
Is there any additional discussion? Call the question. The motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve in, in... Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve indemnification and hold harmless agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation required to obtain an encroachment permit for Old Floyd Road at Veterans Memorial Highway, project number X 2329, and authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
It's good to see this project move forward. Commissioner Sheffield?
So moved.
Second. Is there any additional discussion?
I just want to say thank you, Drew, for keeping this on the radar. It's going to help with some challenges that I have with this particular location, so thank you.
Absolutely, it's a good project.
All righty, call the question. The motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners authorize advertisement to hold a public hearing prior to expending $100,000 or more for engineering design services for Powers Ferry Road Bridge, Interstate North Parkway Bridge over Chattahoochee River, State Project Number M 006531, Cobb County Project B 2115.
Okay, Commissioner Richardson?
Yay, so moved. Second.
How do you really feel? Okay, any additional discussion? Call the question. The motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve project number B 2102, task order number one, to the 2022 Master Task Order Contract with BCC Engineering LLC, doing business as Heath and Lineback Engineers Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $446,548.18 for preliminary engineering design of Collins Road over Little Alatuna Creek, authorize the corresponding budget transaction, and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
All right, Commissioner Gamble?
So moved. Second.
Any additional discussion? Call the question. The motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve the revised budget and current schedule for the 2016 Transportation Improvements Program funded primarily by the 2016 Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax, and authorize the corresponding budget transactions per the 2016 SPOS Transportation Improvements Program budget and schedule attached to the agenda item.
All right, so moved. Second. Any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries five zero.
Thank you. And our final item this morning is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve the revised budget and current schedule for the 2022 Transportation Improvements Program funded primarily by the 2022 Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax, and authorize the corresponding budget transactions per the 2022 SPOS Transportation Improvements Program budget as attached to the agenda item.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Call the question. Commissioners, the vote passes five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Drew. Next up, we have our Public Services tab, and our items will be brought by our Parks Director, Michael Brantley.
Good morning, Chairwoman, Commissioners, County Manager. We do have two items this morning. First item is for the Board of Commissioners to approve a contract with Integrated Construction and Nobility Incorporated to provide construction services for Hurt Road Park additional parking under the 2022 Parks SPOS Program. This contract includes construction services to add additional parking around the basketball court area. This parking is needed due to heavy use and access issues across the park road. We ask the BOC approve the contract with Integrated Construction and Nobility Incorporated for construction services at Hurt Road in an amount not to exceed $228,049.17, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Sheffield?
So moved.
Second. Is there any additional discussions?
No, just thank you.
Okay, I'll call the question. The motion carries five zero.
Our final item is to approve a contract with Signal Signs of Georgia Incorporated to provide construction services for entry signage replacement at various parks under the 2022 Parks SPOS Program. This contract includes signage at East Cobb Park, Hyde Farm, Clarkdale Park, Harrison Park, Big Shanty, and Wild Horse Creek Park. We ask the BOC approve the contract with Signal Signs of Georgia for construction services at various parks in an amount not to exceed $103,762, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
All right, so moved.
Second.
Any additional discussion? And just for conversation yesterday, we understand that there are a number of parks that do need to have signs replaced, and we're doing it on a rolling basis as we have many more signs than we do have resources, but we're doing what we can as we can.
We have approximately 78, 79 active parks right now. Those are the signs that need to be replaced, so we're probably on number 10 or 12 right now, so we've got a lot more to go.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I'll call the question. The motion carries five zero. Thank you, commissioners. We are now at our Support Services tab, and we have our new interim director, Andrew Yakimovitch, here to present our agenda item.
Good morning, Madam Chairwoman, Commissioner, County Manager. Property Management has one item this morning. Property Management would like to request the Board of Commissioners approve a two-part design-build contract with John W. Spratlin and Son LLC with the initial phase contract amount of $853,000 to include only the design, project fee, and general condition costs for the replacement of Fire Station Number 12. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
All right. Commissioner Burl?
Yes, thank you. Very happy to see this moving forward. And with that, a motion to approve.
Second. Is there any additional discussion? We'll call the question. The motion carries five zero. Thank you, commissioners. Thank you, Andrew. We are now at our second public comment bill?
There's no one to sign up for the second portion.
Okay, thank you. With that, then, we are at our Commissioners' Public Address at 10:40 a.m., and we will begin, I know, record time, we will begin with Commissioner Gamble once this law is
You can spread the warmth and share gratitude this new year by contributing to a meaningful cause. The honorable Judge Angela Brown of Superior Court is currently collecting adult-sized coats to donate to a local charity. If you have gently-used coats that you can part with, your donation could make a significant impact on those in urgent need. You can reach out to Judge Angela Brown through email at judgeangela brown@gmail.com or her number is 770-847-7022 to coordinate your coat darnation. You are invited to celebrate art and culture with Marietta Cobb Museum of Art, featuring Carlos Solis, artist and founder of the Latin American art group Contrapunto. Carlos will be discussing his art and exploring the past and present of surrealism. This event will take place this Saturday, January 13th, at 2:00 p.m. at the West Cobb Library, which is located at 1750 Dennis Kemp Lane in Kennesaw. And lastly, get ready to join the MLK Parade in Marietta on January 15th. If you own a car, truck, classic vehicle, Corvette, motorcycle, slingshot, trike, Can-Am, horse, golf cart, or four-wheeler, here's a chance for you to be part of this celebratory event. The parade will kick off at 367 Montgomery Street and wind its way through Marietta, concluding at the Marietta Square. If you have any of the mentioned vehicles and can be part of the parade, you can contact the SCLC at 404-863-0945, or Roger Pierre at Tarrick Temple, which is 404-543-5753, for more details and express your interest in participating. Cobb County Government Offices will be closed on Monday, January 15th, in honor of the civil rights leader, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll now go on to Commissioner Richardson.
All right, yes. So Martin Luther King Day, Monday, January 15th, is coming up. Let us not forget the profound impact of his tireless advocacy for civil rights. County offices will be closed for a day on to a comment from a public comment speaker earlier, and they will reopen again on January 16th. From the office, we've got January is our Economic Development Focus Month. For the month of January, D2 Office will be talking about all of the different policies around here. The focus will include strong, comprehensive plans to improve community partnerships, expand industry, support local businesses, and ultimately make sure our county is ready for an economic turn that comes our way. 2024 Priorities Tour. As we kick off the new year, we have launched the tour as of now. Several have already registered for their slots, and do know I asked for at least three people to be on that meeting, but it's a chance to learn about all of the priorities that we've collected throughout the years, and a chance for you to provide feedback on what you would like for me to focus on for us to present at the Q1 Town Hall. So please visit D2Cobb.com and book your tour stop today. And the Holiday Food Drive Success. I can say a big thank you to everyone that participated in this effort. It went from November 15th through December 22nd, and the results are in. The community donated 493 pounds of food and supplies to the Center for Family Resources. These donations will go directly to help Cobb families in need. And to learn how you can support the Center for Family Resources, please visit thecrf.org. From the community, we've got Alive After Five. The Smyrna Business Association will be presenting their networking event, Alive After Five. This event is free and open to all who are interested. Thursday, January 15th, from 5:30 to 7:30 at DT Spade Specialized Real Estate. For more information, please visit smyrnabusiness.org. Next, we've got a kicking off the new year by helping others, the Cobb PAL Program. This is Police Athletic League is collecting new and gently-used cleats for underprivileged kids through February 29th. Your contribution can make a lasting impact on a child's sports journey. Donations of cleats and other sports equipment can be dropped off at any Cobb County Police Precinct Police Headquarters or the Police Training Center, and please visit cobbcounty.org/polic to learn more. And we want to hear from you. The second public information meeting for the Cumberland Transit Center Site Feasibility Study will take place Wednesday, January 31st, from 5 to 7. This is my birthday, January 31st, just FYI, at the Boy Scouts of America Atlanta Area Council. Officials have narrowed down the possible locations for the future Cumberland Transit Center, and residents are invited to come out and provide their input on the site options. And then lastly, just make sure you can connect with the office. We've got all of our upcoming events, the ones that are in the near future. We've got our Priorities Tour going on, the BOC zoning hearing and the agenda preview for it, along with our standing community huddles. Thanks, and that concludes my announcements.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll go on to Commissioner Burl.
Commissioner Richardson, I had zoning on my birthday.
So terribly, terribly, sorry.
Happy New Year, everyone. We're starting off with the bang 2024, and look forward to what the future holds, and we hope many blessings continue in the year to come. January pet special and free adoptions on Mondays at the Cobb County Animal Shelter. Now through the end of January, dogs can be adopted for $20, and cats for $10. Start out the year right by taking advantage of the special and being there for your new special friend. And also on Mondays, the trailer is in the parking lot for free adoptions from 11:00 to 3:00. Cobb County Animal Services is located at 1060 Al Bishop Drive in Marietta. Go take home your new best friend. Also, January 15th is MLK Day, and it's a day of celebration of the life and legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King. And the NAACP will be sponsoring an event at the Jenny T. Anderson Theater at the Civic Center, 548 Marietta Parkway, starting at 10:00 a.m., and it will showcase singers, dancers, musicians, spoken word performers, and more. This is always a great performance in celebration of Dr. Martin Luther King. Lot of talent in Cobb County that auditioned for this. And then last but not least, please sign up for my newsletter and contact information for me and my assistant on the screen. Thank you. And thanks for the dog kennels. That was a total surprise and very exciting.
Very good. Well deserved, well deserved. Thank you. Thank you. With that, we will now go to Commissioner Sheffield.
Okay, District Four News and Updates. Happy New Year. I am grateful for another year to serve District Four. 2023 was met with challenges as well as wins. The acronym PUSH, persist until something happens, helped me to navigate through the challenging times as we pushed to move D4 forward. To see all that we accomplished last year, visit cobbcounty.org for District Four's 2023 Year in Review. I look forward to seeing what great things will happen in 2024, not just in District Four, but throughout all of Cobb County. And congratulations to the Austell Senior Center. They received an Outstanding Partnership Award from Wellstar Health Systems Community Health and Center for Health Equity. This prestigious recognition honors their commitment to improving food insecurity and enhancing the health and well-being of the community. The award stems from the Austell Senior Center's partnership with Wellstar and Gooder in the Mobile Market Program. Through this collaboration, the center established five pop-up markets, providing over 500 residents with free access to fresh produce, groceries, and pantry staples. Again, congratulations to the Austell Senior Center on this well-deserved recognition. Last Saturday, I had the pleasure to attend the 10-year celebration of the Riverside EpiCenter and to honor the founder, Bishop Dale C. Bronner. The EpiCenter is a multipurpose facility that offers activities for the entire family. There is bowling, rock climbing, a recording studio, a theater for live performances, and a world-class gym. It is also a premier location to host events, to co-work, produce podcasts, or meet clients at the Loft Cafe. The Riverside EpiCenter is a strong pillar in the community and has often collaborated with nonprofits, hosted community meetings, served as a voting location, and partnered with Cobb Douglas Health to assist with COVID-19 testing. I look forward to building an even stronger and meaningful relationship over the next 10 years. Join me and Planning Commissioner Michael Hughes for January's In-the-Zone Community Meeting on Thursday, January 25th, at 7:00 p.m. Our monthly meetings are virtual and a great way to learn about upcoming zoning cases in District Four. Please email rwandamacintosh@cobbcounty.org for the link. Hope to see you there. On Monday, January 15th, our offices will be closed to honor the life and legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King. This year would have marked his 95th birthday. Dr. King is recognized as one of the most influential leaders of the civil rights movement and an American hero. I encourage everyone to take the day on and not off to volunteer in your community. One of my favorite quotes by Dr. King is, "The time is always right to do what is right." Let's utilize this day to reflect on the impact of Dr. King's work, and let's continue to fulfill his dream. Visit cobbcounty.org for events around the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right. In bringing in the new year, I think it's important to recognize that our board did approve a document to guide how our county, our staff, and our citizens come together and how we move the county forward. And so I thought it'd be helpful, as we kick off this new year, to share our mission and values as a community, and then to talk about our themes and the areas of interest. Our mission as a county is to make Cobb County the best place to live and work, the efficient, effective, and responsive government that delivers quality services. It is our vision that we are a county that is thriving, innovative, and safe, and that we enhance quality of life for the well-being of all. So as we are conducting our work, and as we are voting on matters and putting forward programs, you know, a litmus test for us is to see, are we in comport with our mission and our vision? Additionally, we have county values, which have been posted throughout our county. The first one is commitment to the grit and grind that it takes to keep moving forward, our goals and initiatives, and yes, it is a grit and a grind. It includes dedication and determination, even in the face of adversity. It is servant leadership at its core, so we recognize that sometimes there is adversity, but we keep moving forward. but we keep moving forward. Diversity also brings us together in support of a common goal, regardless of our differences. Diversity is our springboard for our inclusiveness as a county. Diverseness is being, excuse me, diversity is being invited to the party and inclusiveness is being asked to dance. So while it's important that we see the difference of people who are here today, we also hope that you can be engaged in the way that we conduct business within our county and that we're being mindful of everyone. We also desire to serve with integrity so that the public can trust us to operate effectively, efficiently, prudently, and with the highest ethical standards. We also want to work as a team, and we welcome and desire for you to bring varied perspectives to the table, which enables us to work collaboratively and in the best interest of the county. Can move on to the next slide. These are the themes of, again, how we approach our work with diversity, considering quality of life. Certainly, funding and finances are important. Having safe communities, we aspire to be resilient, to be accessible, to have sustainable growth, to be innovative, to have a community that's affordable for people to live in and for us to have connectivity with transportation between our different amenities. Our next slide. These are our eight areas of focus of the county. They include community development, economic development, effective and efficient government, housing and livability, infrastructure, mobility and transportation, public safety, and quality of life. It is my goal to see us align our agenda book and the way that we are conducting ourselves as a county, so that we can be mindful of our strategic plan, so we know that we are all headed in the same direction together. And so you'll be seeing me refer to these in our next meetings, so that we can show how the work that we are doing is aligning with our strategic plan. Okay, we can go to the next slide. Again, Martin Luther King Day is coming up on January fifteenth. I hope that you will join the county, as we have a continued partnership with our Cobb County branch of the NAACP, and their program will be at the Jenny Anderson Theater at ten a.m. on Monday. And our next slide. I'm very appreciative of working with Communications to highlight some of our accomplishments in twenty twenty-three, and so I thought I'd show you a video of some things that we captured that made twenty twenty-three special for us, and look forward to seeing what we create next, or this year, for our top twenty-four. With that, Ross, you can kick us off.
So you can see, we have a lot to be proud of as a county, and there's certainly a lot more that we do than these things that were captured here, but I think it's important that we recognize our strengths and all the great things that we are doing. I look forward to us capturing a list of twenty-four things this year with everyone in the community. Feel free to share with us your events, so that we can highlight them as we are recognizing our accomplishments throughout the year. With that, thank you for tuning in, and I look forward to seeing you at our next meeting. Our meeting is now adjourned.